Time, we do have a call, we got six of seven, and shall we stand for invocation? Please.
Let's pray. Most questions, having to follow, we just thank you for being able to be here tonight for this gathering of concerned citizens and the people that are elected to take care of the county, county's business and let this meeting be conducted in harmony and everything to be said and done be in favorable in your sight, in Jesus' holy and precious name, we pray. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda would be to approve our work agenda for tonight.
Shall move.
I'll second.
Have been motioned to second that work agenda be approved. Are there any questions? All in favor? Supervisor Davis online?
Yeah, yeah, I'm on Mr. Chambers.
Alright, thank you.
He only put his vote in for.
Hey, Mr. Chambers, Mr. Chambers said, can you put your vote in on Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Seven yes. The next be approved by our minutes.
A move to be approved, I'll second.
Motion is second that the minutes be approved. Are there any questions? All in favor? Vice Davis.
Yes.
Seven yes. The claims, we need a motion to approve the claims.
Shall move.
Motion will approve it.
Motion is second that the claims will approve. Are there any questions? All in favor? Supervisor Davis?
Yes.
Approval of the second quarter appropriations. Motion to do that.
Second motion, second.
Motion is second that we approve our second quarter appropriations. Are there any question in the motion? All in favor? Supervisor Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there announcements? I mean, we were down to presentations. Mr. Lewis, Shannon Lewis? Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time today. We'll give just a little information about the state forest before I present your check. We had a pretty good year on the Fmax Buckingham State Forest. Most of our forest management activities went quite well. We worked on several hardwood improvement projects. Were able to treat invasive species at several locations, mainly Elanthus, or tree of heaven. We started working on two demonstration areas this year, and these are locations where we can take the public when they want to see forestry practices, and from one location you can look at multiple practices without having to hop around the forest. So, really nice for tours, or if somebody just wants to learn how something works, or how something's done, we can go to one location and take care of a lot of different things. We participated in three forest management and wildlife tours this year. Forest always has a major role in camp woods and wildlife. This year, there were 57 students in that camp, and they used the state forest as an outdoor classroom. There were also two fire academies where the field exercises were held on the Fmax Buckingham State Forest. Participants were a combination of state employees, federal employees, and volunteer firefighters. And these two academies allowed 126 people to get trained. Our timber sales. This year, we were actually able to sell timber at a level that's consistent with our management plan, so that's up a little bit from, from the past year or two. Basically, forest total, we harvested or sold roughly 258 acres. And we sold thinings on about 140 acres. What does amounts to is the county payment for this year is $32,507.25. Thank you. To you? Questions about anything I presented?
Have any questions, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Vice President for Piedmont Virginia Community College?
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
I'm Jean Runyon, President Piedmont Virginia Community College, and Scott Jeffries really excited to be here tonight. So, wanted just to provide just a little bit of information about Piedmont Virginia Community College, and we do have a presentation. Great, thank you so much. It is wonderful to be here again. I was here in my first year at Piedmont Virginia Community College, and I'm starting my fourth year as president. I'm really proud and honored to be President Piedmont Virginia Community College. First, I'd like to go ahead and recognize a member of our college board, Joyce Gooden, who represents Buckingham County. I'm not sure if she's back here, but she just had a reception, and she has been a phenomenal contributor to our board. And you can see on the next page, on the next slide, it talks a little bit about the college board, which is actually part of Virginia State Community College and State Board Code to establish local college boards to serve in advisory capacity. You appointed Joyce to serve in this capacity, and she represents Buckingham and also the shared interests of the college as well. And as such, she also serves on the Building and Finance Committee, making contributions in those area, as well as board decisions overall. So, at Virginia Community Colleges, we are one system. We are 23 colleges in Virginia. We serve locally, but we are also part of one system. And then, as part of that, Piedmont Virginia Community College is considered to be a medium-sized college. We also serve regionally, working through Go Virginia regions to have more of a collective impact, when we can't, instead of always being an independent college, we try and partner whenever we can through our regions as well. As part of Virginia Community Colleges, we have one system plan, and the overarching goal for accelerate opportunity is to be able to award 300,000 cumulative credentials of value by 2030, and that's across the Commonwealth. You can see there's five different pillars. There is a website. You can actually go and see the metrics assigned to each community college, including Southside Community College that serves your region as well. And you can see that how we're doing in serving students for, through credentials, or through educating more learners, investing in the workforce. And this is a dynamic website and dashboard that really talks about how we can serve the communities and how we're doing in the service to achieving 300,000 cumulative credentials. And then, we also have our own strategic plan called Momentum 2030. It's in its second year, and it lines very closely, but it really guides the work that we do locally. Our plan itself has three pillars focused on access, completion, and community impact. We really want our students to come to us and to be an open-door institution, but more importantly, we want them to complete what they start, whether it's a degree, a credential, or to transfer to a four-year institution, and truly believe that all jobs, all pathways leads to a job as well. We also have our own dashboards that are available on this website. We're going to talk just a couple of those right now, but you can anytime log in and see how the students are doing from Buckingham County, how many are coming to us, and what their progress is as well on the interactive dashboard. This past year, we had, you can see that we had almost, we had 869 total graduates and credentials, and some of our students received more than one credential as well. Forty-seven of the graduates were from Buckingham County, and they earned 54 awards, so some of them received more than one award. And you can see by location how our graduates, where they come to Piedmont Virginia Community College. And then, we are accredited by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools and Commission, so, or SAC COC. One thing, so we are accredited as our other colleges, and most recently, as part of that, we became the first college in Virginia to be officially approved as a prison education program by the U.S. Department of Education, which guarantees that those who are eligible for Pell Grants in prison are able to receive those. So far, there are only about 80 colleges in the United States that have been identified as a prison education program, and we do serve a large population of graduates and students in Buckingham. In fact, we have a commencement coming up next week at Buckingham Correctional Facilities, where students are earning associate degrees while they are incarcerated as well. And then, we as a college are number two in transfer. We are just behind Northern Virginia, so we're really proud of the fact that our students come to us, and many do, because they intend to transfer to a four-year institution. And you can see that one of the things, as a community college, we find that about 80% of the graduates from a community college stay, live, and work in the local region. So, we're really proud of the fact that our students stay and contribute to community vibrancy as well. So, it's good to be part of a community college. And today, I wanted to introduce Morgan, who is from, graduated from Buckingham County, she has to stand up, County, and she took dual enrollment classes, and she is now in our radiology program. She just started. It is a highly competitive program. We have about 100 students that apply to this program each year. She's one of 24 that were admitted this fall, stellar students, and we're super excited. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to also have Morgan as part of our college community. And her parents are here tonight, and they're wearing PVCC gear.
The parents, please stand.
Thank you. And so, when you think about healthcare providers, we've got about 20 healthcare programs, Morgan is going to be one of those very compassionate, caring healthcare providers in radiography, and so we're super excited, and thank you for being here. And we will invite you to her penning ceremony in two years. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
It would be where Piedmont Virginia Community College, where workforce goes to college. It's not just about transfer, it's also about workforce. And you can see that we have a lot of programs, including fast-forward programs, there are short-term industry credentials, where students come to us, the student pays the first third, and if the student completes the program, the state pays a second third, and if the student earns a credential, the state pays a third third. And these aren't things like CDL, HVAC, welding, and so on. Just wanted to showcase one of your other, one of our other students from Buckingham, Tuan, he completed a basic welder course. He completed our nuclear in processing and scaffolding training. He is now completing a pipe welding course, and he was super excited that he started making 37 point, just over $37 an hour, and because he's allowed to work overtime as well, he's earning over $56 an hour. And we asked him what he was going to do, that he really wanted to help his mother fix up her house. So, we're super excited to have these students as well. And so, we're trying to always make sure that we're offering the right programming. We are looking at starting a dental hygiene program as an extension site. We're also doing a lot around the biosciences, biotechnology. There are a lot of new industries coming into our area, so we'll be working in that space as well. So, just want to turn this over to Scott.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Scott Jeffries, Vice President of Finance, Administration of Services, and it's an honor to be here this evening. Thank you all for taking the time. Just a couple slides about affordability, because that is of mind for every family who thinks about wanting to send their child to college, or even somebody wants to go back into, to upskill and go back and earn a credential. And so, we are primarily funded through state funds, just in terms of our overall operating budget. About 50% comes from the, comes from the state. 41% comes from tuition and fees, and other categories, 9%. That's more like grants and from our foundation. And PVC is educational foundation, does help support, and support from localities do help kind of round out our entire budget. We do want to thank the board supervisors here for your contributions for FY26 budget. It certainly goes a long way, so thank you very, very much for that. Last year, in terms of affordability, and this is huge, for families who have students who are going through high school right now, and, and thinking about getting also community adults who are currently working, who want to come back to school. Affordability is huge when it comes to community colleges. You take our per-credit hour, and if you were trying to think about being a full-time student here, it's just over $2,600 a semester here. And so, especially with dual enrollment courses, if you want to go and take just courses that you know are going to transfer to a four-year university for a fraction, you can get the same curriculum, the same course, the same rigor at a community college than you would at a four-year institute. It's all transferred in there. And so, it is a huge, huge opportunity for families. It's a huge cost benefit for families. And another thing here, is, next slide, is about dual enrollment. Dr. Quentin Johnson and his fantastic team, he's the president at Southside, it's fantastic team, do provide dual enrollment services here for students in Buckingham. And so, but if you go to the next slide here, just so everybody knows, CCRV was just passed last year in legislation, actually passed in 2024, took effect this fall. That basically says no matter where you are in the Commonwealth of Virginia, as a high school student, dual enrollment is free. Dual enrollment is free. And so, that is another opportunity for families. We think about the affordability piece. If you can offer dual enrollment, it has to be on the, on the campus. Each high school student will have a prescribed pathway to meet the requirements for UCGS, and so, we'll be offering it no cost to all dual enrollment eligible students. Classes of affiliate requirements, I'll be provided by the credential faculty at the home school or online by the community college. So, even though it have a staff member on, at the high school to be able to do it, it's going to be offered online by college faculty. And so, not all courses are eligible for that, but courses outside the prescribed pathway may be taken at cost, but you are guaranteed the UCGS to be covered for free. All courses required by the passport, uniform, certificate of general studies will be available online as well, asynchronously, every semester by 2030. So, that is an objective here by the VCCS. And really, the whole point is try to create consistency across the Commonwealth. It shouldn't be decided by whatever your zip code is, or which county you live in, where you reside, that you should have different rates and different costs, for getting the same experience throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, this really does kind of make the game level, levels of playing field for everybody. And so, it is a great opportunity for, for students and for families, and we certainly just wanted to share that with everybody. I'm not sure everybody knew that, but just on the affordability piece. Dr. Runyon and I will entertain any questions you all have, but we just want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here. And do you have anything else to share?
Ford, do you have a question?
I actually would like to recognize, when you first gave Mrs. Gooden, she hadn't walked in the building, but she's here now, and I think she needs to deserve the recognition that you gave her. But Gooden, would you stand up?
Stand up.
I want to say thank you very much. We're really proud to be part of, be the community's college, and thankful to be able to serve Buckingham as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Moving down to item three, update on VRA loan and consider resolution. Davenport, anybody?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, nice to see everybody this evening. Kyle Lauks with Davenport. It's been a little while since we've seen the board in full, but we always appreciate coming out to Buckingham and seeing you. We've served as the county's financial advisor for a number of years, and appreciate doing that out of Richmond. What we're really here tonight to talk through is the end of a process, working with the county administrator, county attorney, and your staff, obviously with input from the board, in terms of a process to go and borrow some dollars for capital projects that are identified by, by you, the county. And so, to that end, I think up on the screen, we have a presentation we'll walk you through. Answer any questions as you have them, certainly happy to take them, Mr. Chair, as they come up. But I think I'll point out, even before we get into the details, that this is really the end of a planning process. And so, these projects have obviously been vetted. You've been talking about them for a while as a county, and they fit in very nicely to the county's financial profile. And so, one of the first questions we ask and answer, when the time comes to say, you know, we need to go borrow some dollars to invest in capital projects, is what's the capacity to do that? You as a county have the capacity to take on these projects and this type of loan. While it's not necessarily in this book right now, your existing debt pays off very quickly. And so, what we'll talk through is your ability to take on these new projects is in part set up by good management historically, whereby your debts are paid off quickly. They're paid off in a way that these new projects we're talking about this evening will basically be able to slap right in as the old loans are paid off. So, I just give you that as a little bit of background before we even get into the details here. Carl, if you go back just one page for me real quick. And so, the loan we're talking about is about $8.4 million for a variety of projects. You can see those in the middle of the page, Gene Dixon Park Animal Control, Storage Building, and Police Training Range. It's purposely flexible, give you as a board, working with your staff, the ability to work through these various projects at your discretion. That type of flexibility is built into this process. As Carl mentioned at the outset, this is really a process to go through the Virginia Resources Authority. We've gone through a vetting process of both banks and this VRA program. VRA is a state-run program. You've used it as a county for a number of times, been around for a long, long time. They allow you to borrow in the public credit markets with the state's backing, and so, we get the advantage of the state's very high credit ratings, which translates into very attractive interest rates. And so, we've gone through that vetting process. We'll give you some of the details in the next couple pages. In terms of overall interest rates, we're talking about borrowing dollars. What we're really talking about is borrowing over about a 20-year time period. The investments you're making are going to be long-lived, meaning you'll pay for them over the time period, a little benefit for the taxpayers. And so, those interest rates we borrow at are fixed rates over about a 20-year time period. Those rates right now are very favorable. We'll give you best estimate of where those are here in a page or two. But your ability to borrow in those credit markets, again, is set up by your well-run finances, as well as the state, and being able to access the markets through that VRA state-run program. Corollary to that is that also in the current market, you're able to take the cash you have, whether it's the county's reserves, or even these dollars you're going to borrow, you're able to reinvest those. And so, there's really two sides of the equation we look at. The first is, what is the interest rate and the interest cost on a new loan? How do we think about that in the budget? And the second is, what are our opportunities to reinvest cash that you have in state programs? And so, what we're showing on the page here is a program called Virginia Snap. This is also run by the State Treasurer, longstanding program that allows you to take any of these proceeds, meaning bonds that we borrow, and reinvest them and earn interest on that while you're working your way through the projects. Importantly, that program right now is earning about a 4.4%, 4.5% interest rate. That's important because as we flip one more page here, the current market estimate for this VRA program is right about 4%. So, you'll actually be able to go out and borrow at a 20-year fixed rate, best estimate right now is about 4%, and turn around and reinvest those dollars that are about 4.4%, 4.5%, while the project is being, you know, the various projects are being bid out and constructed, so forth and so on. That same relationship holds true for your other county cash and reserves. There's a very similar state program that allows you to do the exact same thing, which is to put it in a state-run program, invested by a state treasurer, earns about the same thing, about 4.5%, around that 4.4%, 4.5%. So, part of this, in terms of strategy, is a way to make sure we're conserving your reserves, which are very, very important, earn as much interest as possible off, off of those reserves, and also allow you to lock in a really favorable long-term borrowing rate, again, while those long-term borrowing rates are indeed favorable. So, I've alluded this a couple times, and we'll go back just one page real quick. The payments on this loan, and again, when it's set and fixed, it'll be over 20 years, the payments at about $650,000. You actually have more debt service than that that'll be freed up over the next couple of years. So, that paydown of your existing debt will pay for these payments and then some. And so, there's no material impact to the budget, and you're also able to conserve your cash and fold that in without any material impact to the budget in FY27, '28, and going forward. So, we make that point as well. So, again, our recommendation rationale here for you is to use this VRA pool program. It's something the county's used multiple times. Many, many local governments across the state have used that. It gets you access to those credit markets with the state's very, very favorable interest rates, and really credit ratings behind it. The current estimate is about 4%. We won't know that exactly until VRA sells their bonds. They do that the end of October. And so, the action you'll take this evening will allow all that process to go forward, subject to certain parameters that are contained in the resolution that we'll talk about in just a moment. In terms of next steps and time schedule, this evening, it's obviously September 8th right now. We appreciate being here. There's a resolution put together by McGuire Woods, who's the county's bond counsel. Your consideration and approval of that would allow all this process to continue forward. It's the only thing we need from the board in order to make that happen. And then, we would work our way through the balance of September and October, working with VRA, working with your staff, make sure the rest of the process and paperwork is done, and VRA will sell their bonds, and we'll know exactly what the interest rate is at the end of October. And so, really, by about shortly after Halloween, you'll have funds in hand and be moving forward with the projects and be able to reinvest those at those interest rates. And so, with that, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll pause there, see if there's any questions, thoughts, comments, anything that you have.
Randy Ford, do you have a question at this time?
I actually have one. We actually met, Mr. Chambers and I met with you when we were on the finance committee.
Yes, we did.
And it's not so much a question, but I think a taxpayer needs to be aware of it and be informed of it, because this is a lot of money that Buckingham County is going to have to pay back. My major concern when I met with you is we had some money in the funding, and you just touched on that a few minutes ago, but break it down in a little bit simpler terms. I'll break it down, and you tell the taxpayer here that's listening tonight, is this not true. Most of the times that I learned in business, if you had money to put down, and more money you had to put down, it better off it was because you didn't have to borrow as much to pay interest against it. And that was one of the major concerns that I had when we were talking about this project, should we use the money that we had and then not finance as much? But from what you explained to the taxpayers tonight, so we can see about the funding 100% of this loan, is you actually saying that we can make money off the money that we have, instead of putting the money down, we can draw more money off of what we have than what we, if we put the money down. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is indeed correct.
I think the taxpayer need to be explaining that in a simple terms. I think the taxpayer need to be explaining that in a simple terms, that because it looks bad when we have the money. When I say it looks bad, I don't, it's a question that would need to be answered. Why aren't we using the money that we have? But from your answers from Davenport, we actually make money off the money that we have if we invest it in the right way. So it's better to finance 100% of the loan. Is that correct?
That's exactly correct. And even to take it a step further, the other thing it does is it provides sort of all of your options and flexibility going forward as a county. And so as you work through the next several years or five, 10 years, you'll be able to draw that interest off of the dollars you have in the bank. And you'll also be able to make decisions in the future about where you target those dollars. You may get five, 10 years down the road and say, you know what? We do want to pay some of this down. You'll have all of that flexibility within your, within your grasp.
And I think that's a good idea for the taxpayer while we borrow that money instead of using the money that we have to be put down.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. A lot of this flexibility. Yes, sir.
The way I understand it, while you say you start one, one of those projects that you showed on the first slide, while you start that project, that sum of money, the amount is going to drop off. So that amount is not going to be drawing you anything because you're going to be spending that on the project. Am I correct?
That's right. Yeah, so the dollar.
You're not going to be drawing, you're not going to be drawing 4.5% or whatever you quoted, 4.5% off of the total amount that we're going to borrow.
That's correct. That's correct. So yeah, so eventually the dollars you borrow are going to put into the.
Exactly. So as that total comes down, the interest that you're going to gain off of that money is also going to come down.
That's correct.
Making sure I understand correctly.
Yeah, the only, the, the other part to that, though, is the other non-borrowed dollars that you have as a county, your reserves, your cash, that you don't have to spend down. And so that, that same relationship exists.
I see what you're saying. Keep that, keep that.
Yeah, that's like your savings account. You can keep the dollars in your, has nothing to do with any borrowing.
Let that piggy bank keep making money for you.
You got it. Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to put it in layman's terms.
You got it. You nailed it.
I'm just making sure I understand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Now, thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. And there's a resolution, again, that at the discretion of the board that would allow us to move forward, so.
Yeah, that was in your packet. It should be a resolution in your packet for tonight.
You have a motion to pass a resolution to move out with this project? Motion to move out with this project?
The original packet? I didn't see it in there.
A three.
A three?
A three in your packet.
That's where I see it.
I see it.
Yeah.
So if I want to make the motion, should I, do I need to read the entire resolution or just say we move to accept this resolution or to make this resolution?
To adopt the resolution.
To adopt the resolution, okay. Then I make that motion that we adopt this resolution with Davenport and Company.
Second?
Second.
The motion is second, and we adopt this resolution with Davenport and Company. Other than the question of the motion? All in favor? Davis?
Yep.
Seven yes. All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Moving down to public comments.
We have 15 signed up. The first one is Helen Fuqua, District One. Patty Cupchick will be next.
Good evening. I'm Helen Fuqua from District One. Last month, your assistance was requested in resolving a matter that has been ongoing since 2023. Tonight, I'm going to share some information on the Code of Virginia, regulatory agencies, identification of the omission and the zoning review process, and recommended corrective action. This information is crucial in your decision-making. My professional knowledge comes from career experience guiding local government agencies through the Code of Virginia and the process of meeting those requirements. A packet of information has been provided for you. In government operations, we work from a point of reference. That point of reference is the Code of Virginia. The Code of Virginia is a requirement. It is not optional, and it's the minimum standard that must be upheld. Reference Code 15.2-905, titled "Authority to Restrict the Keeping of Inoperable Motor Vehicles, Et Cetera, on Residential or Commercial Property: Removal of Such Vehicles." The definition for and criteria for an inoperable motor vehicle is specified. Only one of the criteria needs to be met. During a conversation with Mr. Davis, he had a question about living in a bus. This is an example of where you ask, who is the regulatory agency? In this case, there are multiple regulatory entities. The DMV requires that the bus be retitled as an RV, meet the criteria to be classified as an RV, and provide clear records of the conversion process to demonstrate compliance with the DMV, the VDH, and local regulations. The health inspector's role would deal with sewage, waste, gray water, and water supply. Zoning and parking restrictions also come into play. Most localities do not allow RVs or motor homes, including converted buses, to be used as permanent residences. Campgrounds or RV parks that are subject to VDH regulations and allow long-term stays are an example of an approved location in Virginia. In summary, if your bus is registered as an RV, meets these designated criteria, and is parked in a legally designated spot, you may have it as occupancy. The bus, okay, gentlemen, I have met my three-minute time limit, but you're in good shape because your packet covers everything thoroughly. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Cupchick, District One, and Donna McRae Jones will be next.
How are you, gentlemen? I was here last month to request your assistance in the same problem that Helen just presented you with. In your packet, you have the Code of Virginia that explains what an inoperable motor vehicle is and what the requirements are for the bus to be occupied. The bus at that property fails to meet those requirements. Also included in your packet tonight are photographs of the property when it was purchased in 2018, when I first started to bring the problems to the attention, along with Helen, in '23, and then what it looks like now in 2025. If you look at the information in the spreadsheet that we provided, you can see that we identified 14 inoperable vehicles on the property. If you reference Buckingham Zoning Ordinance, Page 81, Automobile Junkyard, five or more vehicles of any kind incapable of being operated are placed. In 2023, with follow-up with Carl Carter, indicated that the zoning administrator had relied on the property owner's self-reporting to determine that the zoning violations had been corrected. When Helen reported to Carl that the property owner's statement was not correct, the zoning violations still exist, Mr. Carter neglected to send a county employee for a site visit. Omission in this process is preventing you all from seeing what's going on and from the violations being resolved. Who is processing and who is preventing the zoning regulations from being enforced? Helen met with Nikki on July 24th. During that meeting, she said that she would issue a letter to the occupants of the bus and another to the property owner as he had not responded to the first letter. This is six weeks after that meeting. Can you please ask Nikki to provide copies of both letters to you and documentation that they were really sent? We just want to be advised of what is happening with the zoning process and timeline. In closing, I just ask that you follow the Code of Virginia in reference to the zoning and just require some visits. Maybe go and just have a visit, see what the property looks like, re-advice the owner, and then do a follow-up. We would greatly appreciate it. We really love our neighborhood, and we need your help and support. We really do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Donna McRae Jones, District Two, and Kelly Franz will be next.
Good evening. I'm Donna McRae Jones, District Two. I live at 1806 Coward Road, Cumberland, Virginia, which is considered Buckingham County. I come to you tonight actually thanking the people of Buckingham. Unfortunately, I ran out of pens to give to you guys. Cameron got his pen. I'll give you guys yours next month. But what I want to do is Relay for Life was held in Methlofian on Saturday. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it because I was not feeling well. But I have been keeping Relay alive, and I just wanted to come up and thank, special thanks to the Town of Dillon for their continued support. Also, Pino's for their continued support for all-day dining. And also Ellis Acres for Hope Day that we have on Saturday, honoring our caregivers as well as our cancer survivors and all the establishments that I go to to collect prizes for, for our event. So that's what I wanted to do today. It's, next year, hope to be better and more efficient. But I just wanted to go on record as thanking the people of Buckingham for donating and participating and supporting Relay for Life for Cancer. This year happened to be 40-year celebration of having the Relay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Franz, District Six, and Lori Collins will be next.
Good evening, gentlemen. Some of you I've met and others I have not. When the special use permit for Riverstone Solar was voted on, many citizens spoke up with serious concerns about how this project would affect the roads, streams, lands, and the future of our community. My home is right next to Riverstone Solar. I am below it and surrounded on three sides. The same evening that it was voted on, Dale Moore, a Campbell County supervisor, drove nearly two hours to speak at the meeting, and he warned the board about Riverstone's developer, Apex. He said, and I quote, "These same folks have about a 1,200-acre site in Campbell County, and it's the worst thing that's happened to Campbell County in a long, long time. They tore up roads, destroyed ditches, ran muddy water into the river. Neighbors called me constantly. One farmer's cattle couldn't even drink from his creek because it ran red with mud. Every time I confronted them, they said, 'Don't you worry. I'll take care of it.'" But they never did one thing, not one thing. Mr. Moore also warned this board that county staff would be forced to spend endless hours chasing Apex to fix problems, and they won't do it unless you make them do it. That was his quote. The project here in Buckingham has just begun, and his warning is already proving true. Apex has violated the special use permit by cutting down protective buffers required under Condition 13. They are also violating Condition 28 with construction traffic, including heavy construction trucks using the restricted part of Paints Pond Road. What other violations exist? If Apex could not follow the rules before a building permit has even been issued, how can they be trusted with a project of this scale? This board now has a duty to address these violations and uphold the law by instructing the zoning administrator to order a stop-work order and reject the building permit application before more harm is done to Buckingham County. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lori Collins, District Six, and Marie Flowers will be next.
My name is Lori Collins and I'm District Six. I live at 511 Blue Heron Lane with my sister. I want to talk about responsibility, transparency, and enforcement of special use permit conditions. When this board approved a special use permit with specific conditions, many people were not happy. But they made a promise to the community. They said, "We'll allow this project, but only if these protections are followed." We trusted that promise. But if developers are not held to those requirements, if conditions can be ignored without consequence, then what's the point of even having them? Why go through a public hearing? Why have citizen input? When government fails to enforce its own conditions, it breaks faith with the citizens, and it tells the developer that the conditions are merely suggestions. This isn't going to work. Right now, we have a developer violating special use permit conditions for Riverstone Solar, and our zoning administrator has not responded to repeated reports of these violations. This isn't just about one project. It's about the integrity of our entire permitting progress, process. Supervisors, you have the authority to ensure these conditions are enforced. We need your help. Our trust in local government depends on your willingness to hold developers accountable to the promises they made and the conditions you imposed. It was a contract. Please direct immediate enforcement action. Please pull the special use permit for Riverstone Solar. Our community and its environment needs our protection. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marie Flowers, District Three, and Cory Shalene will be next.
Hi, y'all. Marie Flowers, 266 La Grande Lane. I am here to speak about the Riverstone Solar also. I don't live close to it, but I care about what goes on in this county. I believe last meeting, we talked about a number of the violations that this company is doing. And apparently, it has a very, very bad history in other areas. And I would like to ask you to pull the permit. Do not let these big companies come in and hurt our people or our environment. You're here to protect people. I mean, what's the point of having regulations if you don't make sure that they are enforced? Also, I have a, this is my last meeting. I'm moving to another county. I'm not going to be here to annoy you anymore. But anyway, I still care about what happens. I'll still be in Virginia, and I will still be going to other board meetings and annoy other people. But please, care about what happens in our county. Pull this, you know, if you nullify this permit, other companies are going to be very careful about what they do in our county. They will. They will be careful, and, but I'm asking you all, care, care, please care. I care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cory Shalene, District Six, and Chad Oba will be next.
Good evening. My name is Cory Shalene. My wife and I closed on two parcels in District Six on our 10-year anniversary back in December, totaling approximately 32 acres. Our plan was to get our infrastructure in place so that we could park our RV on our land while we build our home. We are new to Virginia, trying to establish residency here in Buckingham County. With the intent to do everything by the book, we started inquiries back in November to determine the needs to get on our property. It was no secret that we wanted to put in the infrastructure, then move our RV to the site, allowing us to save thousands each month on campsite rent, excessive vehicle wear and fuel, as my wife's commuting an hour and 45 minutes each way from Amelia to Charlottesville, which has put an additional toll on our family as well. To work on the property, to get it ready, we've been traveling over an hour each way, which has limited our progress to fair-weather weekends since I work Monday through Friday. The financial burden caused by all these delays has forced us to forego our three-bedroom dream home here in Buckingham County in favor of building our one-bedroom guest house to start. We are also likely to not be able to start until the spring, which is kind of unfortunate because cold weather and concrete doesn't mix so well. Fast forwarding to the end of June, the infrastructure's in place, power is ready to be inspected. For utility connection, this was when our dreams were crushed by finding out that we were not zoned for an RV, and we couldn't move forward. We were on track to be moved in there by July 1st. We seriously considered selling the property and at the point due to bleeding money and the inability to move forward. I wish someone had told us back in November that we needed to endure a four-month S U P process to execute our plan. At this point, we've submitted an S U P on the schedule for the 22nd of this month with the zoning commission. If all goes well, maybe by our 11-year anniversary, we'll actually be able to be on the property. We shouldn't need to jump through all these hoops to reside in RV while building our home. We do have a building permit. I understand the desire to not have Buckingham County riddled with a bunch of broken-down RVs all over the countryside, but there's a simple solution I'll gladly talk about outside my three minutes. But the requirement to acquire an S U P for a campground that doesn't even meet the state's definition seems a little overboard. The state statute implies that less than three campsites would be personal use and allowed on private land. I admit, I assume that the state statute would prevail over the absence of a more restrictive county ordinance, but I have since been informed that the ordinance denies people of their rights unless expressly permitted. This is not really the American way in my mind. I respectfully request that the board, if any authorization that they can grant, allow me to get my RV on my property sooner than December. And secondly, I request that the board raise a motion to revisit the ordinance to make it more permissive and allow Buckingham County residents more freedom on their land. Thank you for your time.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
I understand that you have sewage and well and everything.
I have two 1,000-gallon septic tanks, a drainage field capable of four-bedroom. So our intent, our site plan was always to build a three-bedroom home, one-bedroom A D U, temporarily to be on the one-bedroom. Where the one-bedroom A D U is going to be built was where we're going to park our RV on its own septic system while we build our three-bedroom house. Where we are is about 1,000 feet off the road, 800 feet off the road. You can't see it from the road, can't see it from my neighbors. If anybody sees my RV on my property, they're trespassing.
Can we revisit this thing, and he got his, he building a stick home there, right?
Beg your pardon?
Building a stick home, and you just want to deliver the RV until you get your home built, is what you're saying, right?
Yes.
I can't see why we can't, board member, I think we should do something to help this man because I don't think it's exactly fair.
Anybody wants to come out and see it? I will gladly.
What permit did you have to apply for?
For a campground special use permit, which is what we applied for this month. It's on the agenda for the zoning commission.
What, I guess what defines a campground is my question.
The legal determination by our county attorney is that there is no allowance or permitted by right in an A1 zoning district or any of our zoning districts for a campground, a campsite. An RV is not to be used unless it is at an approved campground.
Let me ask you this. How many campground permits have we issued in Buckingham County?
Quite a number in the last four years.
I'm talking about public, I'm talking about public campgrounds, I mean.
Depending upon the number, all private campgrounds are governed by the Department of Health. But yes, we have.
I guess my question is, how many special use permits have we issued in the county for people to have permission to park?
In the last four years, probably 10 to 20. You've had campsites anywhere from three to five or 10. They've accompanied typically an event center and dry campsites. Yes, sir, there have been a number of approved S U Ps.
I mean, I guess the question I'm asking is, how many individuals who own property say the same scenario that he's facing, just to park a camper there to live in temporarily until they get to home?
There's no allowance for a temporary use.
There's no allowance for a person to live in a camp RV on their own property.
Just like the zoning violation that was reported this evening for someone that the report was they were living temporarily in an RV, there's no allowance in our zoning ordinance for the temporary use of an RV.
That would be the simple solution that I said I would talk about outside of here. It would be really simple to add that as a line to the permit application, that if you've got an active permit, that's already tracked, and if you don't show progress on it, it's automatically revoked, right? So if it's just a line item on the application, it gets tracked along with that whole thing. Should be a simple solution as long as you've got an active, valid active permit. And in the sense, are you going to use temporary thing? Please explain.
I mean, I understand there's a difference in living in an RV, temporarily living in an RV.
Sounds like you're trying to do it right, sir.
Right.
I am absolutely trying to do it by the book. I've had my infrastructure in place there since late June, and I'm still commuting and paying a campground.
It seems a tad different than what Ms. Fuqua spoke about when you have 14 inoperable vehicles there. It's a different scenario completely.
Somebody living on a bus.
I don't know how to break that down. We talked to our administration about handling something on an individual basis, you know, because a rule's a rule, and I understand that, but completely different than this scenario that was talked about earlier, not in the same realm. You're just guys trying to build a home and trying to get there and make it easy until you get your home built. And I concur with Mr. Chambers and Mr. Palmer on that as well. I don't know what we can do about that, but I guess we need to look into it.
As it stands right now, apparently if I bring my grandson up here, I can't set up a tent in my backyard and let him camp for the weekend. That's against the ordinance, and that's a violation of the zoning ordinance.
I'm going to see the SWAT team come in, right?
Right. You never know in today's world, right? But, you know, that's the thing, and to me, the premise that you can't do anything unless it's explicitly permitted is the wrong way to look at these ordinance. If it's not explicitly denied, then I would think that state law should take prevalence. And in state law, state doesn't even recognize a campground unless it's three or more campsites. And then it's required to have dump stations, public toilets, public everything. I talked to the health department. They said as long as you're under three, then you don't need all these campground requirements. So to me, that implies.
Just approve, and then you can put that one in.
Sir.
As far as I'm concerned, we disapprove, you can put that one in because you're trying to build, you're trying to work at it. It's not, it's not like a camping ground that everybody's complaining about.
Sir, I agree with you.
And we have other places that are doing camping, that are living in place and getting by with it. But yeah, in my opinion, I think you ought to be able to live in that while you're building a house.
So what do we need to do, Ms. Anderson? Do we need to make an amendment to the ordinance?
It would require an amendment to the ordinance. Mr. Shalene met with both myself and Carl Carter in July to discuss this. We also had a conversation with Mr. Wright, so at your direction to both Carl, Carter, and myself, I'm sure we can.
What are his options right now to do? What is his options he got right now to can do to get up a bit?
The permit for the campground or?
Met the park is RV.
Get a permit to be able to live in the things until it gets their house built.
You have to get a special use permit to pocket down there?
Yes, sir.
How long would that take to get that done?
Four months.
Four months, just like any application process.
That's four months.
So we closed on property December 13th. That last step of that, if everything goes as planned, is the first Monday, so it would be the 13th on our 11th year anniversary that we would actually be able to move there one year later.
And you're right now.
We're pretty much hands tied of how much work we can do. I mean, I've cleared about two acres up there. I've got all this infrastructure in place. Everything's ready to rock and roll.
What we have to do to change the ordinance?
Mr. Carter?
What we have to do to change the ordinance?
Attorney question, well.
If you want to change the ordinance, you're going to have to have a public hearing as well.
Have a public hearing, okay.
I mean, if you want, I think we're going to make a motion a little bit later about recess and reconvene. If you want us to take this action up as well and come back with that.
Taking into consideration.
Yes, sir.
We will do that.
Try to help you.
We try to do what can.
If you give us a few minutes.
Anything that I can do to get out there before then? You know, every month saves me a couple thousand dollars. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
One thing, one question I did have for you, sir, before you run off. Where is your RV parked at this time?
In a campground.
How much is that costing you?
$700 a month plus utilities.
Roughly eight, $900?
Yeah, and then, and then not only that, but with the, you know, 70-mile commute every day that my wife's making, it's, you know, three hours of driving.
Okay.
You know, to go to Charlottesville.
And I admire you for trying to do the right thing. You're trying to do the right thing, but it shouldn't cost you that kind of money to not be able to park your RV on your own property when you have all the amenities to hook it up and do it properly.
Yeah, I've gone through the health department, made sure that everything works.
We're going to try to help you, sir.
I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chad Oba, District Six, and Brad Pickens will be next.
Good evening. Chad Oba, District Six. I am formally requesting that this board direct the county attorney to review and issue a written legal review to the board and to the public on whether the Riverstone Solar project qualifies under state statute 15.2-2209.1:1. The Riverstone project is moving forward today, but it never should have been allowed to start. You've heard a lot of reasons why. Condition four of the special use permit is very specific. It required a building permit to be submitted within two years or three years if an administrative extension was granted after consultation with the board. The building permit application is dated June 25, 2025, and there is no public record that such an extension was properly requested or granted. Riverstone did not meet condition four deadlines. The special use permit was already expired well before that building permit was filed. The developer claimed that the state statute, as it read as above, as amended in 2023, provides an automatic extension for submitting a building permit until July 1, 2025. That claim is simply not true. The 2023 amendment did not change the eligibility date for what qualifies. That cutoff remains July 1, 2020. So again, the Riverstone Solar project does not qualify for an extension. The developer's claim will not hold up under serious legal scrutiny. Allowing this project to continue based on a non-supported reading of state law puts the county in legal jeopardy. Legal clarification from the county must be made public and issued before any further permitting or construction moves forward. I urge you to direct the zoning administrator to immediately halt all work on this project. The citizens of this county expect the rules to be followed, and we expect our local government to do its due diligence, and that starts with a clear legal answer. I really encourage you to listen to the people who have spoken about this project to date. They know what's going on, they're paying attention, they're essentially doing the work that you guys can't get to. I know you're busy, I know you have other parts of your life to attend to, but they really need your help, and they've done the research, they've looked closely, they know what's going on. This is going to turn into a legal situation. I really hope that you will attend to it. Thank you.
Brad Pickens, District Six, and Samantha Aldridge will be next.
Evening supervisors. Chairman Brad Pickens, 377 Blue Heron Lane, front row to the circus known as Apex Riverstone. I believe the county attorney either misread or was misled to advise that the COVID statute that Chad mentioned permitted an automatic extension of Riverstone S U P, and I second her comment about looking at a legal determination for that. In the meantime, Riverstone Solar is in clear violation of the special use permit. The violations are going unchecked. We've heard that from several people, and we have reported things to zoning administrator or through the zoning administrator, and we've received no response, not even an acknowledgement. On condition 13, there's a mandatory 50-foot buffer of existing vegetation and property lines as well as streams and wetlands. That language is clear. The buffer must be at least 50 feet, no exceptions, no waivers, no allowance. Yet, Riverstone has repeatedly cleared within those required buffers even when healthy trees and vegetation existed. They've installed fencing, stormwater structures inside the buffers, and they're not just technical oversights, these are direct continuing violations of a binding legal condition. Many of these violations and buffer incursions can't be mitigated because the cut and fill operations have permanently altered the land, and once that natural slope is re-grated, the mature trees are removed, replaced with compacted fill, the natural function of the buffer is gone for good. Violation is of, not just of the permit, but the trust of the community. Mr. Merrick somehow convinced D E Q he should build within the wetlands to protect the wetlands area, and this makes no sense. It's like you're vet euthanizing your dog so nothing bad can happen to it. In the end, no dog, and here, no wetlands. Condition 28 prohibits construction traffic on portions of Payne's Pond Road. We and I have seen heavy construction vehicles, service vehicles, commuter vehicles coming in and out of the entrance on Payne's Pond Road and going down across Payne's Bridge towards 20, and that's a prohibited section. It isn't speculation, it's happening, and it's dangerous. I am asking the board for the same three actions, issue a stop-work order based on the violations of conditions 13 and 28, require a full remediation plan before they continue any work, and consider revoking the S U P for material breach of those conditions, and after legal review, see if they even have a valid S U P. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This is in District Six, and I hear all the comments coming from people. This is my recommendation to the board that we would, our recessed meeting tonight for two weeks, and we go out and let the staff go to investigate that. If a find is there, do we have emergency shutdown to stop the project until they come into compliance with the state laws? I think that's fair enough.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I concur with what Mr. Chambers said, and just to let you know, Robert's rules are ordered, and lay your chairman to make a motion. This is Mr. Chambers's district. He's talked to me in depth about that. He's concerned about it, so I'm concerned about it, and I think the rest of the board has some concerns too. I'll let them speak for themselves. But to let you know, this motion is coming through your chairman, through me, because he cares about your district, he just can't make the motion, and that's just the way it is. So before I make a two- or three-phase motion, before we do that, it's going to be a little bit lengthy. Mr. Davis, are you concerned? I know you're on Zoom tonight, but are you concerned with this? I've talked to you in depth. I know you and Oder Taylor Dave with these allegations down there on, and I've on your way, Ms. Fuqua has made. Would you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I have concerns also, and I'm just wondering what has been the reports from Hurt and Profit, the firm we got hired for the erosion and sediment control inspections and stuff, what kind of report did we get back from them?
I don't want to answer that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Davis, we got that report back. They did their first inspection on August 20th, and they're going to do it every 14 days unless a major rain event happens. The first report we got dated August 20th, there was no significant findings.
As far as sediment?
Erosion and sediment control.
Erosion and the erosion.
Yes, sir.
That don't address all the other concerns they got.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah, so I'm talking about the concern that we're heard tonight on the whole project.
Well, I, I'd like to make a, a motion that the board of supervisors recess to reconvene in a couple of weeks on three separate issues. Number one, through Mr. Chambers's district and District Six, about the allegations made tonight through, uh, about the Riverstone Project, through the county administrator, the zoning administrator, and the county attorney to look into this and these claims and report to us in two weeks, number one. Number two, this gentleman that spoke tonight with his RV, I'd like to see if we could talk and meet about something to help this gentleman about a change in the ordinance or whatnot that would allow him to participate without costing him an arm and a leg to try to do the right thing. And the third thing is to look into these investigations that have been made by these people, uh, with these fourteen inoperable vehicles and the center, uh, county employee down there to check, uh, no more than what was done in my district a month ago, uh, to see if these claims, I have no doubt, ma'am, they're not legitimate, but I think we need to make a motion to look into this and pass it. And so this is actually a three-phase motion with those three things that you all are concerned about. And then we, we meet back in two weeks and try to give you all a report on all three of them. And so if we could move forward with that.
Well, add to your motion, in two weeks, meet back if they find us there, that we will shut the project down until they come into compliance, that'll be in your motion?
If you would put that in the motion, Mr. Carter, I'd appreciate it. So I'll hit that.
We had a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it been motion second twice, but we would, uh, go with the three, uh, motions he made.
Recession to reconvene.
Recession to reconvene in two weeks and make a decision.
September fifteenth at six o'clock.
September fifteenth.
Fifteenth is one week.
That's one week.
Pardon me?
September twenty-second, I'm sorry.
September twenty-second.
The planning commission meeting. Planning commission meeting.
Whatever two weeks is for the next.
What is two?
September twenty-second, she said they got a planning commission meeting that night.
What is the twenty-third, what is that, a Monday night?
Yes, sir.
What about the twenty-third then? That's a Tuesday. Can we do it on Tuesday?
I can't, I won't be here, I, I can't be here, but I got a previous bit. Well, since it's three things.
I would say can we do it, can we meet earlier than six?
Yeah, well, Mr. Gary can't be here, can we, since it's three things, there's a lot to do. Can we make it three weeks, is that fair enough or?
That's fine, or what I said, we can meet at five o'clock that day.
Give everybody opportunity, I, we just want every issue addressed and to make sure it's done.
Change it to three weeks instead of two.
Three weeks, okay. Which I'll tell you, I'll go with that, just, I want all the board members present, so.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty, twenty-nine, okay.
Monday to twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Yes.
Monday to twenty-nine.
Oh, that's gonna be three days after my surgery, so I might have to do.
Call it.
May have to do what Mr. Davis is doing and participate by phone.
All right. All, all in favor? Davis?
Yes.
Seven yes, okay, thank you. Come on, man. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I apologize.
September twenty-nine, six P M.
Hi, everyone, I'm Samantha Aldridge from Districts, District Six, and I won't take too much of your time, and I really appreciate you all, um, you know, filing that motion and reconvening in three weeks. Um, but I do wanna mention that I am the organizer of Buckingham, Virginia Residents Against Industrial Solar. We've had three hundred petition signers for, um, no solar coming back into the county, and we have over two hundred and eighty members in our group. Um, again, we're deeply concerned, and I'm not gonna take too much of your time talking about this, but, um, I do wanna let you all know that we, we know that the state has recently considered bills that would strip local governments of their power to deny or restrict large-scale solar projects. Although those proposals did not pass this year, they do show a clear trend. Local authority may not always be protected. That makes it all the more urgent to use the power that you hold now, and I appreciate you all stepping forward and doing that. One other thing that I wanted to mention, this wasn't planned at all, but, um, Davenport that was here earlier, I recommend you look into them, they had, um, a lawsuit filed against them by their Fluvanna Board of Supervisors, um, because they were misleading on bond advice. Although the case was dismissed, I really urge you to look into it, they also were, um, they were, they were fined by the S E C eighty thousand dollars for failing due diligence on municipal bonds. So just look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Ruth Aldridge, District Six, and Kendah Honeman will be next.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you, my name is Ruth Olender Aldridge, I'm in District Six, two-eight-six Hummingbird Road, Scottsville, Virginia. Um, I was here many times speaking about water quality, and actually bought a water bottle up here about the issues with drinking clean water. I'm here to speak again about something that can't speak for itself, and that is water. What's happening at Riverstone Solar Site is putting our streams, wetlands, and downstream ecosystems at risk. These are not abstract concerns. When you scrape away trees, regrade the land and the compact soil, you erase the natural systems for the filter, systems for water, and the runoff, and absorb rainfall. The fifty-foot buffer vegetation was designed to protect those systems, but those buffers have been not honored. They've already been cleared in multiple areas, more clearing is still planned. What is used to be fostered, filtered, is now a fast lane for sediment and stormwater. It is fast flowing straight into creeks, wetlands, and the James River, which is the Chesapeake Bay watershed, which I spoke about prior. This isn't just poor planning, it's harmful for all of us, not just Buckingham. And it's happening on your watch, and I encourage you to dig deeper into the details of what's happening. You don't have to look far to other counties, whether it be Cumberland, Louisa. These issues are circling all across the East Coast, the West Coast. The changes being made to this landscape will have lasting effect on water quality, not just on the project site, but throughout the watershed. The time to prevent this now, harm, prevent this harm is now, not after the water is already degraded. And on another note, my daughter could not be here tonight because she's actually working with NOAA for ocean conservation. She sent you an email at five-thirty, and I have copies for you as well, because I wanna ensure that you get the documentations from your concerned citizens, someone who's researching water quality to make sure that our future generations have clean water. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, do more homework. Because our future depends on it.
Kendah Honeman, District Five, and Laura Keaton will be next.
Good evening, I wasn't sure in what your, uh, your proposal was. Is that stopping the project right now until you have another meeting? So they're gonna continue?
Come back.
After we come back, after we come back, we say that we find that they're stopping.
Thank you, maybe it's a moot point, but I have a lot of things to tell you, and I'll go ahead, and I hope it's gonna be wrong, because you're gonna do the right thing. But this project is in clear violation of a special use permit. The county's failure to enforce those conditions is a failure of its legal and public responsibility. You've been notified repeatedly by citizens neighboring counties and the public record about violations to the buffer requirements, restricted road use, and site plans, and yet, nothing. Hopefully, that's not true any longer. Let me be clear, this, if this board and county staff continue to look the other way, you will be sued. Not just Apex, the county itself will be held liable. A clear record is being established showing you had the authority, the evidence, and the obligation, and chose to do nothing, that is negligence. You are undermining future economic development. Investors need to know this county enforces its laws and protects its people. These conditions were not suggestions, they were mitigation requirements designed to make this massive industrial project acceptable. Ignoring them sends a message that developers can do what they want, and the county will look the other way. Litigation is coming, it has already started. A property owner adjoining the Riverstone Project has filed a lawsuit against Apex Riverstone and Appalachian Power for the illegal use of his land to connect this facility to the power grid. If you, as a supervisor, zoning administrator, or any other public servant, are not willing to enforce the conditions this board voted to approve, then you should resign. And I mean that sincerely. I'll help you with the paperwork. The people of this county deserve a government that works for them, not developers. Do your job, or step aside and let someone else do it. Thank you.
Laura Keaton, District Six, and Robert Donovan will be next.
Hi, I'm Laura Keaton, and I'm from the solar, I'm gonna be a complainer also, but I so appreciate your effort tonight, because I feel almost like crying, because I feel like you're finally listening to us. I'm from District Six, I live on Payne's Pond Road, I'm very aware of what's going on. I have a three-minute speech, I'm gonna drop it because I think you are listening. Please prove to us that you are listening. I do have a question, is that meeting open on the twenty, when did you say, the twenty?
It's open.
And are you gonna broadcast that on the website and?
Uh, you do, don't you?
Jamie doesn't. Jamie doesn't.
It'll be a normal meeting, like.
It's a, it'd be a normal meeting.
At six o'clock.
Ma'am, six.
On the, what was the date?
Twenty-nine.
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 After September.
Well, I'm sure we'll all be here again, and we're really eager for you to listen to us, the concerned citizens, because we feel very strongly about what's going on. And I will add that I have a very dear friend from the northern neck of Virginia who fought a solar system, and it caught on fire, and the county did not know how to treat the hazard. So, you know, there's not just water, there's not just animals, there's other issues, please pay attention. Thank you.
Robert Donovan, District Four, and David Ball will be next.
Good evening, board, uh, thank you for your time this evening. Um, I just wanted to, uh, come in, I'm gonna show my, uh, lack of engagement in local government with this subject, I suspect, but I wanted to come in and talk to y'all regarding the, uh, recent installation of all of these, uh, Flock Automatic License Plate Readers. I assume y'all are familiar with them. They've been installed at, best as I can tell, every single county crossing on the state roads. Uh, I don't know what the county's intent is for the installation of these cameras. I don't know how much y'all are, uh, aware or familiar with their functionalities. Um, they're essentially A I, uh, uh, how's the best way to describe it? A I-integrated, uh, traffic cameras, and I just have come to express my concerns for personal privacy. Uh, there's already a legal, uh, situation that's been taking place out of Norfolk, Virginia, regarding them being a Fourth Amendment violation. So, uh, I'd ask the board, is this something that y'all had discussed previously? Because like I said, I've not been very engaged with local government, um, and, uh, no, these are, these are Flock Safety Cameras, they're at all the county lines, they're not the speed cameras. They're, they're the Automatic License Plate Readers, they basically take a picture of you every time you drive by. So every time you enter or leave the county, it's gonna take a picture of your car.
I wouldn't know where we had those.
Yeah, and they, I said, I've done a little bit of investigating, just driving around, looking around. It seems like they've been put at every single county, county line, and, uh.
Help tremendously in child abduction cases when people kidnapped children, young children, and that was a way of tracking them and whatnot, it saved a child's life, I do know that.
Yeah, I've heard they're also good for stolen vehicles, but that's, it's also one of those things where you take a picture of everybody just in case someone's a criminal, and it's.
Yes, it means if your child's abducted or not, but I guess that would make a big difference. If it happened to be a child that was abducted, that was one of your family members, but I can understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I'm not up here to argue with you guys, but, uh, I'm just telling you that it's concerning, it's, uh, integrated with Palantir, which has been in the news with how they're integrated with every single other bureaucracy, um, or proposed being integrated with every single other bureaucracy, essentially, anybody can find you at any given time. So that's just my concern, so I appreciate your time again.
Thank you.
David Ball, District Two, and that will be all.
Good evening, David Ball, District Two. I just wanted to, um, express, um, some appreciation for all the efforts and the work that you do, but I wanna bring up, uh, issue with some of the speeding that goes on in the county, and particularly that goes on within the town of Dillon. Uh, there is quite a bit of speeding, and it goes on day and night. And I know for the majority of the town, the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour, but seeing people going forty, fifty, or faster is a little disturbing, especially when they go through the residential areas where there is no leash law, so dogs are out, kids are out playing, people are moving around, doing stuff, working in their yards, but having vehicles traveling at that speed is a little disconcerting, so, and I know enforcement is hard to have somebody there all the time, because that, you know, is an expense. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is that, um, Curtsville Community Center, which I serve on the board, has been doing a lot of maintenance and upkeep on the building, and we're having a lot more programs and activities, but we also are looking to have more events and activities come to our, our building, and we wanna be part of the community and active and be a place where people can come and, and have programs and other activities so that, um, we can help build a more cohesive environment here in the county. So I wanna invite you all to come to our next board, our next open meeting, which is always the first Monday of the month. We always appreciate having the supervisors come attend. And, uh, I think, other than that, um, I am running for mayor of, of the town, so looking to kinda deal with some of the issues, including the big tax increase. And I also wanna say thank you for everything you do here, all right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Be that road mask, Mrs. Scott, for you.
Good evening, Chairman and Board, thank you for having me tonight. Quick update for you, Supervisor Gilliam, we spoke earlier this month, or actually, I guess it was last month, about six fifty to Bell Road, um, and I got a speed study submitted on the section you were, uh, asking about.
Yes, sir.
Um, specifically between Route fifteen and six thirty-two. Um, and we took an initial look at that, it actually has two thousand vehicles per day, which was much higher than I thought it was gonna be, so, uh, the, the, uh, speed study normally takes a few months to get done, so when that comes back, I'll, I'll share the results with you.
Appreciate that.
Um, as far as the rural rustics, uh, work that we do, where we, we turn gravel roads into hard surface roads, we do, we're working on six of them this month in the county. We've got five of them done, uh, Firehouse Boulevard Road, Old Fort Road, Maxi's Road, and Avon Road. I believe those are all complete, uh, maybe with the exception of putting up some signage, uh, closing the projects out. We're still working on Pembleton Road, uh, I think we got two more layers of the surface treatment to do, and then we'll be. Uh, I think we got two more layers of the surface treatment to do, and then we'll be working towards closing that out as well. The work that we did on Route six oh two, the resurfacing, uh, surface treatment work, that is done, and I've been told the contractor put the striping back down. I haven't ridden that road yet. But I'm looking forward to seeing it. I heard the, I heard it all looks good now that it's all the way done. With the, I was talking to Supervisor Allen before the meeting. We've done some asphalt work out there on Thomas Road. Uh, there might be a little bit left to do. I think the equipment's still out there. Uh, I think that project's going well so far, too. Uh, and Supervisor Garrett, you asked me about a speed study on Holland Road. Uh, that one actually has a whole lot less traffic on it. The, the first section of it is about a half mile. It has a hundred and seventy vehicles per day.
It was Mr. Palmer.
Oh, sorry about that. Mr. Supervisor Palmer, I'm sorry.
Like, I know where Holland Road is.
We got same half.
That's right, yeah. Same barbed.
My bad there. Anyway, after you get past the first half mile, the traffic drops down to seventy vehicles per day, and, uh, discussed it with Traffic Engineering. They took an initial look at it, and they decided not to make any changes. Just wanted to let you know that. Still have the work orders into the district crews to do the restriping work on Troublesome Creek and Bell Road. It's gotten drier lately, and we've been, uh, working on applying dust control on the gravel roads throughout the county. I know you guys are getting dust complaints. We've also been running two boomaxes and, uh, working on potholes throughout the county. We've got planned work to work on six thirty-six Francisco Road and also, uh, six oh four Meadow Creek Road between sixty and fifty-six. On, on Francisco, we'll be working between six forty and fifteen. We're gonna be doing some shoulder repairs and ditching work. Uh, we're working on a safety cut throughout the county. Uh, like I mentioned, last month, we mowed with a contractor once, and about as soon as we got done mowing, where we started, we just picked right back up there making a safety cut. Uh, had a lot of growth this year. And then, uh, just the last part of my update before I open up the comments from the Board, uh, I just wanted to let you know, next month, there's a holiday that normally conflicts, so if I don't get to be at the meeting, I, I talked to Mr. Carter today. He said he'd take your comments and pass them along to me, so... But at this time, if you have anything for meetings, let me know.
District One. Boogie?
Yes, sir. I, I just wanna thank Mr. Frederick for the signage on Stonewall Road and all. I haven't had a complaint since we got the signs up, so it must be working with the trucks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, District Two.
So, when I, we talked about your traffic study when the, the neighborhood called about your speed on Bell Road, did you say it was two thousand vehicles a day?
Yeah, we looked it up, uh, the, we have a GIS-based system that shows the traffic count on the road, two thousand vehicles per day.
Are you committing to another blinking light down in that area, or no? No, Mr. Frederick, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the study that you're doing, and, uh, we'll see how that comes back and how you make your decision, okay?
Yes, sir.
It was just some people were concerned about your speed, and not that we wanna shut any of the big trucks down at all, because, look, we definitely need, need those in the county for revenue, but some of them are cutting through that road and whatnot, and some of the older citizens, they complained about your speed, so thank you for taking the time to do that.
Yes, sir. No problem. Thank you.
District Three.
Are we, are we in the process of, you, I think you said that Elkin Road was gonna be one of the rural rustic roads this year?
Uh, I don't know if it's this year. It's, I believe it is on the list. I didn't bring it with me.
I thought, I thought it was this year. I rode over there the other day, and I didn't see anything happening, so I kinda was a little taken back, but...
Yeah.
Maybe I missed, maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, I know, I, I think we got six more lined up to do next year, and that's probably one of those, but, uh, when I do come back, I'll, I'll report on the ones for next year.
Any update at all on School Road on the shoulders? Are we gonna try to do something with those before winter, or?
Um, I'm not sure if we'll get to it before winter. We are gonna do a little trench widening on there, uh, but it may be in the spring.
Anything would be a help, especially on the first, I'm gonna say, first couple miles off of fifteen.
Yes, sir. I know right where you're talking about. After you get past the first section, it seems to wide, wide, feel wider.
Right.
But anyway, that's, we're, we're planning to catch that first.
I appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
District Four.
Uh, yes, Mr. Frederick, I think you got most of the lines back on Troublesome Creek Road, I believe, if not have finished, but, uh...
Okay.
'Cause I travel it very much. I think you, i-if they haven't finished, they're not missing very much of it.
Okay. I know where we did some patching, there was some...
Right, yeah, 'cause right, kinda close to my house is a big patch, but that line's got put down right there in that curve especially. That's one of the worst places, 'cause nobody, look like everybody coming either up it or down, that wants to go over the middle of that, you know, and if they meet each other. But, uh, you know, 'cause only half of it's, or roughly half of it has got a line on it anyway. Once you get to Fannie White, the rest of it, the sixty, doesn't have line on it anyway.
Okay, good, that, uh...
I think that's completed.
Gotcha. That must've got done since the last time I checked on it. Thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was recently, 'cause you still had signs up last week, I know.
Okay, good. Thank you.
District Five.
Yeah, uh, six oh two, looking mighty good. Got the lines down on it and everything last week, so, thinking it was good. Firehouse Road, just, Telly Boys have done a good job on that, just need to finish it.
Done a good job, just finished.
Pond Road needs dust control on it.
Okay, Pond Road.
Yes, and Selma Road, too.
Okay, we just, we did Selma not long ago.
Okay. Pond Road needs it bad all the way to the end.
Okay. They are normally only apply it where there's houses. We do about five hundred feet either side of a house. Uh, we don't just treat the entire roadway, so, but, yeah, we can certainly do it. The houses are kinda sporadic, so it might be one that we can catch most of it.
Maybe the Queen Road.
What about it?
It was a dust, it's a dust, it's a duster.
Anybody wanna hurt something though?
Huh? No, it's, it's two or three.
It's two or three, but that's one of its passes, uh, state sign.
Right.
Well, we're working our way through all of them.
It ain't very long, but it is dusty.
Okay.
Uh, District Six, we thank you for doing Maxi's Road. You got Maxi's Road. But I thought you supposed to do six fifty-one, too, where the creek?
Where the creek? It's on the, uh, six-year plan, but it's farther out. So that, that might be another one that's next year. I'll, I'll report on all the ones that are gonna hit next year, next, next time I'm here.
Thank you, sir. District Seven.
I just thank you for all we've talked about, so we're, we're doing good right now.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Ebbison.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You have one case this evening. It was introduced to you last month at the introduction. Tonight's the public hearing for Case twenty-five ZMA three fifty-nine. Your applicant is Anderson Home Construction. He is here with us this evening. The request for a zoning map amendment from A-one agricultural to R-two residential for the development of a nine-lot major subdivision was requested on Tax Map eighty-two parcel one, Lot zero C. It does contain just over twenty acres. He is here with you this evening to address any questions or concerns that you may have in regard to this major subdivision.
Ma'am, listen. Thank you. Then in the Board members having the questions for Mr. Ellis for opening the public hearing. Yeah, now, so we opened the public hearing. Did anybody sign up to speak?
We have two.
Two? All right.
William Kane. Then David Ball will be next.
Kane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is William Kane. I own the property adjacent to, they are where they're proposing to build these houses. And my question, I have several questions. As far as the county is concerned, um, what are the plans for, um, the construction, or what kind of construction would be there? Would it be, uh, single housing or, or whatever? Uh, infrastructure, uh, what's planned for that? Widening of the road? Would you be doing a, um, a traffic study? Because that, that, that is quite a, uh, a lot of, uh, houses, uh, down on that, uh, is a rural road. And, um, that's about it. But mainly the, uh, the infrastructure, uh, where would you be getting your water from? Where would, uh, your electric or, uh, your sewer, whatever? And, um, how would all that be taken care of? Now, I, I, um, I, uh, don't live here, but I do have a vacation home here, and I pay taxes here. And, um, um, I, I use this as my, um, a summer home, um, my wife, my, and myself and my dog. And, um, this is just some, some of my concerns.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
David Ball.
Uh, good evening, David Ball, District Two. Having worked in just about every kind of construction project outside of doing, say, tunnels underground, I can tell you that having gone around the county and looked and seen the number of abandoned, rundown, deteriorating houses, and the fact that people are now beginning to leave heavily populated areas like Northern Virginia, Tidewater and stuff, looking for the rural life, that, uh, there is a big, big need for housing. And not just this manufactured housing that gets tossed up on a property, an actual constructed housing, ones that are gonna last, appreciate in value, because that's where the value is gonna come for the community and for the tax base. You need good houses, you need good quality houses to justify increases in taxation that are gonna occur over the years and bring revenue to the county. So you really need that kinda housing, and that's relatively important. Without it, what future do you have? Because I can tell you, manufactured houses are not gonna last. They wear out very quickly. Thanks.
That's all?
That's all.
Close the public hearing. What is the pledge of the Board? Mr. Davis, that's your district. You have a comment to make?
I think that is Mr. Allen's district. That's District Seven. I thought it was in my district, but it's Mr. Allen's district, but... My, I, I will make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Can you hear the second because of his motion?
Yeah, it was a motion by Supervisor Davis, it's second by Supervisor, uh, Gilliam that we would approve this. Are there any questions for the Board members?
I just had at one discussion that, that we have a subdivision, um, sheet in here that talks about all this stuff, and it shows that, excuse, in that part of the county, it's, it's not an area for subdivision, but, I mean, whatever y'all wanna do is what you're gonna do. I'm just saying.
All in favor of the motion? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Got six. Yes and one, no, okay. Thank you. All right, ma'am.
I don't have any other cases, Mr. Chambers.
Okay. Uh, zoning matters? You have nothing else? Ma'am, okay?
We've got two other public hearings. We've got two other public hearings.
Two on top, one and two.
Okay. Got a public hearing on the ordinance, farm ordinance?
Yep, and the transit occupancy tax, both of them.
Right. Building the public hearing on which one, Mr. Ebbison, the, uh, can the transit, uh, office of tax ordinance?
I'll, I'll take that one, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you remember, last month, I asked you all to, uh, adopt an emergency ordinance for the transit occupancy tax. We found out that some new laws went into effect July one. Those new laws concerned with who's gonna file this paperwork on how they file their taxes. Um, as you know, if you're doing Airbnb, you can also get a third party to book that for you. You don't have to do it yourself. These new changes to this ordinance concerns with, if that third party books that, they need to file, be on file with the Commissioner of Revenue to pay the taxes for it. So, and your ordinance you have, if you look, I think it was Section Five, that talks about who has to do that, and they have to do it annually, submit who's gonna pay the, uh, taxes for the Airbnb, the transit tax. So I'm asking you tonight, as we adopted this last month on an emergency basis, to adopt this ordinance, so it will be a permanent ordinance going forward, and we will have it in our ordinance with the rest of our county ordinances.
Okay. You heard the, uh, request of Canada Administrator. What is the pledge of the Board?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Am I understanding you correct? The person, the person booking the Airbnb is the one to pay?
It depends. If you use a third party, that third party is gonna be the one that does it.
So in other words, they can bill it to the, they can add tack, tack the tax on to the bill of the person who's, who's basically renting the Airbnb. Is that the way I'm understanding it?
So, if you wanna book a, a reservation or Airbnb, let's say you don't use a third party, you book it, you pay the tax.
Right.
If you use one of these third parties, they're gonna sign a form saying they're gonna pay the tax, and they have to do that, they do that form every year.
So the person who is taking care of the, the rental slots?
Yes, that's right.
The person taking care of the rental slots can also take care of the tax.
That's right.
And the person that's renting it doesn't, it's all included, probably. I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, it's so, it gets, uh, confused with those third parties, so when you do it through a third party, I guess they were getting to the point where I'm saying you need to pay it, no, you need to pay it, so it's making language saying who's gonna pay it.
Thank you.
What is the pledge of the Board?
No one signed up for the public hearing.
Nobody signed up? Okay. Close the public hearing. What is the pledge of the Board?
I'll, I'll second it.
You been motion and second? Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Davis?
Yes.
Okay, seven, yes. Next one is the, uh, up there on the farm, use vehicle ordinance, through the farm, including exemption from certain equipment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, as you recall, a few months ago, we got you, came to you guys and asked for, um, uh, actual ordinance to exempt, uh, farm vehicles from, uh, personal property tax. When we're going through that ordinance, we realized that we didn't have one on the books that talked about farm equipment. Um, and as you know, it's been before, we do everything based off of ordinance, so we need to have some kind of ordinance in the books that exempts, it says in black and white what's exempt. And in your pack tonight should be that sample ordinance that lists everything that's exempt when it comes to farm equipment. I'm asking you tonight to please look at, consider adopting this ordinance so we can have something with the Commissioner of Revenue to show what farm equipment is exempt.
All right. Nobody signed up?
We have mine. I have and Chip Davis.
Davis?
Thank you. Um, I'm here representing, uh, the seven hundred and fifty families that are currently in Buckingham County Farm Bureau and the Board of Directors. They have reviewed, uh, the, um, ordinance as you, it was in the board packet, and, uh, we endorse that, and, uh, we urge you please to, uh, adopt it as written. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Close the public hearing. What is the pledge of the Board?
I make a motion that we, we go through with this ordinance, uh, as Mr. Davis stated, the Farm Bureau's had this looked over and they're satisfied with it, and I think these seven hundred and fifty families will be satisfied with it, so...
Been motion and second that we adopt this ordinance as presented, as written. Are there any questions? All in favor? Davis?
Yes.
Seven, yes. All right. We move on to N-one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In your packet tonight is also is a resolution regarding the, um, being to adopt this resolution to participate in the proposed direct settlement of opioid-related claims against the Sackler family, family and directing the county attorney and county outside counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlement. That's a long answer, or long words for, as in the past, you know, to fund that drug court you guys are funding with Cumberland and Prince Edward. We're getting opioid money from the state to help pay for that. In order to participate and receive funds from those settlements, we have to adopt resolutions and say we are a participant in it. So if we don't adopt this ordinance, when they pay out those claims, we don't get parts of it. So, asking you tonight to please adopt this resolution so that when those settlement funds come out, the county will be a participant in that settlement.
Good motion, adopt this resolution?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept this, uh, resolution. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept this, uh, resolution. I'll second it.
There been motion and second that we adopt this resolution. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Uh, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Seven yes. All right. Solid waste. Consider holding a fall tire day on October eleventh, twenty twenty five, in appropriation of pay for the trailer and workers.
Yes, sir. If you remember back during our budget season, we talked about possibility of having a spring tire day, which we already currently have. We also talked about having one in the fall.
Right.
This will be our first one trying for the fall. Um, Mr. Hill is asking for three thousand dollars to be appropriated to cover the cost of the tire trailer and the workers that work that day. So we'll do this and see how it goes, and you can base, when budget time comes around next year, we can see if we wanna conclude this every year going forward.
Okay?
I'll second it.
Motion and second that we, uh, consider this? Uh, are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Uh, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
All right, we got seven yes. Okay. Uh, number three. Commissioner of the Revenue, consider approval of the twenty twenty five PPT RA credit rate.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And what that is, that is memo from the Commissioner of Revenue, asking to adopt the Personal Property Tax Relief Act. And what that is, you know, the state gives Buckingham County a certain amount of money to reduce your personal property taxes. If you see your tax bill, you'll see taxes that are due, and then there's a credit as a reduced rate which you get from the Commissioner of Revenue. Um, each year, she has to take those funds and spread them out across all the vehicles in the county to disperse those funds to zero. Um, according to her memo, the FY twenty four rate was twenty eight point one seven, and she's recommending a rate of twenty seven point two nine for the FY twenty five. To make, to see, the example she's got listed here, if you have a twenty thousand dollar vehicle, you would pay eight hundred and ten dollars in tax, you get a two hundred and twenty eight dollars and eighteen cents credit in twenty twenty four. With this new rate, it'll be a little bit, you would pay a little bit more because the credit would be less, it'll be two twenty one oh five. So you're talking about a seven dollar difference in the, uh, credit that she's gonna be applying to vehicles in FY twenty five.
All right. What is the pledge of the board? What is the pledge of the board?
I'll make your motion, that's fine. Second.
Motion and second that we approve this? Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Davis?
Yes.
All right. Come on, sir. E nine one one, consider appropriation of thirty one thousand one hundred forty three eighty three for burn, build, and repair.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you this evening for having me. So as you know, we have a fire training center here in the county, uh, we're lucky to have that resource here for us. And every five years, State of Virginia looks into that building, makes sure it's still safe for use, uh, still meets all the qualifications. At our last five-year inspection, they identified about thirty one thousand dollars of repairs that need to be done. Obviously, you lot have been building on fire enough times, it's gonna need repair. Nice thing about that, though, is they provide grant funding to do that, so I have secured the entire amount of money in grant funding to repair it. Um, we just need to approve it first, do the repairs, and then we've, uh, got that money waiting. So my ask for you tonight is to approve that thirty one thousand one hundred and forty three dollars and eighty three cents to make those repairs.
There been motion in the board to approve this?
I'm making a motion to reject.
Get a second?
Second.
There been motion and second that we approve this?
Go ahead, you are.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
John, well done, Mr. Kirby. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Seven yes, all right, thank you. Uh, appointments to committee boards and agencies, Economic Development Committee. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. I, I know, you'd already heard of her, right?
Yeah.
Just add her on.
Yeah. So is this, you make the motion for her, add her?
Yes. You want me making motion now to add her to it?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to add Rebecca Carter.
Second.
Tonight, I don't think.
There been motion and second that we add, uh, Ms. Carter to the, uh, um, this committee, the Economic Development Committee.
Economic.
Any questions? All in favor? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
O two, planning commission.
They voted.
You're voting now, but?
There you go.
Seven yes. Seven yes. Shouldn't this be District Four? Uh, uh, under planning commission, J.D. Cruz expires November the third of twenty twenty five. He's not in District Five, District Four, right?
He's in District Four, yes, sir. He's in my district.
Mr. Garrett, what is?
You wanna approve?
Yes, I wanna, uh, reappoint him. Make a, make a motion that we reappoint, uh, J.D. Cruz to the?
Planning Commission.
To the planning commission, yes, sir.
There been motion and second that we, uh, reappoint, uh, J.D. Cruz to the, uh, planning commission? Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Gilmore?
All right, seven yes. All right, uh, candidate attorney matters?
Chairman, nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Candidate administrator report?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In your packet tonight, uh, I was making you aware that Dr. Reason, the new superintendent for the school system, has invited the board supervisors to a walkthrough of the high schools on October eighth. The tour will begin at, with lunch at twelve o'clock in the cafeteria and be followed by the walkthrough. As we get closer to that date, just please let me know how many y'all want to attend, and I'll get her a head count on who wants, who's gonna be attending in that day. Uh, the second thing I have for you guys tonight is in your packets. Also, we just had, uh, RFC come and give you audit results for FY twenty four. They will be coming to the county again in FY twenty five to start the FY twenty five audit, so just this in your packet as your information that they were starting FY twenty five audit pretty soon. What I have, Mr. Chairman?
Other board matters?
I have one, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, about six, eight months ago, I mentioned to, uh, the board that a lady had come to me about, uh, doing some work on the rails going up into the library. And Mr. Carter, I think you told me that, um, it, the gentleman called me and said he had taken care of it the next day or two after that. She, uh, talked to another fellow board member today and asked him would we bring that back up again. I don't know if we got it confused or if we worked on a different rail than what she was talking about, but if we could go back down to the library and look up the rails coming up the steps and recheck that for that lady, it would be greatly appreciated.
If I remember correctly, it was, it wasn't anything in the middle, right? It was, it was the, the top handrail, there was a big gap that somebody could kind of step through or follow through.
I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll make a phone call to her tomorrow, and I'll call you back.
Okay. I think that's what I remember correctly.
Because I heard it through a second source today. How about if I call, call her, call you back tomorrow on that, okay?
We're gonna take care of it.
Thank you.
Right there, we need to go into executive session.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I need to read all three of these?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Y'all bear with me. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive closed session. Number one, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open setting, open meeting, would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And that's section two point one dash three seven one one dot A dot three. Number two, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And that is code two point two dash three seven one one dot A dot three zero. And finally, number three, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public offers, officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments. And that is section, code section two point two dash three seven one one dash A dot one. And that is the motion, Mr. Chairman.
There been motion and second that we go into executive session in the code as to what's stated. Are there any questions? All in favor? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Seven yes.
They don't do what he ain't going.
They don't do what they ain't going.
Return to regular session.
Somewhere. Alright, I'll make the motion or I can make the motion, you can put other.
I never had jump to go.
Yeah, return to regular session and certification that to the best of each board members knowledge, only business matters related to the codes of which the executive meeting was convened was discussed or considered in the closed executive session.
Motion is second, all in favor of the motion. Mr. Davis?
Yeah.
Seven yes. Anything else need to be brought before the board? Not we recess, recess the ravine on the 29th at six o'clock.
Twenty-nine, alright.